And I normally read the agenda at this juncture, but given the special circumstances that we find ourselves in, I wanted to say a few words to everyone before starting the meeting. So first, I know everybody is looking to get the best information they can access. And in an effort to keep everyone up to date, we've created a method for anyone who wishes to sign up for alerts. So share screen. Oh, could you, Tim, could you unenable attendee screen sharing?
Okay. I think I've done that.
So hopefully, everybody can see the, let me see what you're seeing. Can you see the?
Not yet.
Carlisle government?
No.
No.
You don't see it yet. So hang on, let me see if I have to click that again. Share screen. Come on, let go. Share screen. There we go. This is what I want you to see.
We're not seeing it.
Did you see your dog though? Your dog's strolling by.
Okay.
Now we got it.
Now we have it.
All right, so I'm going to show you where and how to sign up for an alert through the magic of technology. So you're going to go to the Town Hall site. And when you get there, you look at the left-hand corner. You see the emergency alert red button that's flashing in the upper-left-hand corner. Click on it. And that takes you to the alert center. And then under the little cute little ducky over here, there's another red button. And in that text in red, it says notify me. You click on notify me. And it brings you to another screen where you put your email address in. And sign in. And then you get, you can prefer to receive the HTML emails when available or get text messages. And then down below, you have a whole list of things that you can be notified, one of which is the COVID-19. And you can, you know, click on it. And then it'll give you one more step. I have to confirm my account. Okay. All right. So the just, and I wanted to acknowledge Jen Gibbons because she set this up today for us. And I think this is going to be a really important avenue for people to get information that they want. So I'm going to try to get back to my, my meeting here. And I can unshare the screen. I can't find my, my meeting screen now. Oh, here it is. Stop the share. Yay.
Well done.
Also, I know people have questions that they'd like to ask us, concerns about their friends and neighbors, and comments about what they think should be done and how to do it. And the Selectmen are planning to host an open virtual meeting Town Hall forum where these questions, comments, and concerns can be aired. And we'll try to answer your questions as well as we're able to. And we'll certainly take note of what we may still need to do, that you think we may need to do. And we hope that everyone will come away feeling that they understand what the plan is. And we'll set a date and time for this, this evening during our meeting. So stay tuned. And last, in the meantime, I want to assure everybody, and you'll be hearing about some of this during tonight's meeting, that there are many volunteers, town employees and officials, who are working to have a good emergency plan in place, which addresses as many possibilities and future needs as we can. And in particular, I'd like to acknowledge Chief Fisher, Chief Soros, Linda Fantasia, and from the school superintendent O'Shea, and school nurse Lauren Sawyer, and Chair of the School Committee Christine Lear, Angela Davis from COA, Tim Goddard, and Alan Lewis for all their hard work and working on the local emergency planning commission. And with that, we have the following agenda items tonight. Declaration of Local Emergency, Local Emergency Planning Commission, COVID-19 Update, Municipal Vulnerability Program, Town Administrators Report, Liaison Reports, and Adjournment. I'm going to take the Declaration of Local Emergency in regard to the coronavirus first. We have received recommendations from both the LEPC and the Board of Health to make a declaration of local emergency. And we have Tom Harrington here tonight. And he can explain something about the declaration that you have in your hands. Take it away, Tom.
Okay, thanks, Kate. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the declaration that you have before you has been reviewed by Tim and Chief Fisher. We worked on it today. Barney took a look at it as well. So I think the message that I, that I want to make sure I'm delivering tonight is, I don't think there are any kind of magic state tools that we're opening up to ourselves by adopting this declaration. I think the state's declaration has already done that. So that we're not, so we don't need to do this. That's not, that's not to say it's not a bad idea. It's just that I don't want people thinking we're, we're unlocking a new legal avenue to get something quicker or cheaper or faster. Those are already in place. And the state has already put us in that position so that we can, we can expedite certain procurements. Our team has been activated. And, and I think we're in good shape. Okay, so legally, you don't have to. From a communication with the community standpoint, I'm very comfortable with doing it. Most towns are doing it. It lets the town know that the state's declared an emergency, that the town's taking the emergency seriously. In this one, what we're really doing is that we're affirming that the town's emergency management director is Police Chief John Fisher. We're affirming that he's been utilizing the town's emergency management program to respond to the COVID-19 crisis. And we're affirming that Chief Fisher has been and will continue to organize and administer the program. And that he is in regular contact with other local officials and representatives of the state and national emergency personnel. And that he is directing all necessary or appropriate actions. So, so this is, I think this would fall under the heading of messaging, not legal requirement. Nevertheless, I think it's a good idea. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
The revised one, I had a number of edits, but I think they're all covered in your revision. And so there's no real, no real problem now.
Okay. Ah, not my dog.
That's my dog.
That's why he's got the noise-canceling headphones on. He don't get to hear that he does.
All right. Is there a motion?
I will move the Town of Carlisle, under the authority of the Board of Selectmen, declare an emergency as outlined in the attached document.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Luke?
Ask a little eye.
Barney?
Arnold eye.
Nathan? Nathan? Oh. Can somebody unmute Nathan?
Okay, am I muted now?
Yeah, good.
Okay, so if you mute yourself, you need Tim to unmute you again.
Okay, so don't. Okay.
So you're just going to have to hear the dog barking.
That's fine, that's fine.
I was just quickly looking to make sure that nobody in the chat group had done anything. But Brown eye?
Louis eye.
And Reed eye. Okay. So we now are the proud owners of an emergency declaration. Okay. We also, now this is where I might text Wayne. Because I, as a result of many of the things that have happened at the state level, we have now to reschedule a lot of our things, like our caucuses, our election, and our town meetings. So I'm going to try to get Wayne. Because he said he would attend this discussion.
I think I saw his name up there.
He asked to be texted when he was needed. So I can, I can do that.
I can't find him on this list.
He was on earlier, but.
Yeah.
I can text him.
Okay. Frankly, I read the, the, Tom, the Myers &amp; Harrington client alert. And I was totally confused by the section on changing the town election and town meeting. Under the town meeting, can the town meeting be postponed? Because it said the Select Board can vote to postpone town meeting, which we have already done. In addition, the moderator in consultation with public safety officials and the Select Board may determine that there's a public safety emergency and postpone the town meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Could I just infer, what document are we looking at right now?
Tim sent us a client alert from the Myers &amp; Harrington firm.
So it wasn't, it wasn't in the email that was the package?
No, that, it came today.
In this afternoon.
This afternoon, to everybody. And on page three, it's, there's can elections be postponed? And can town meeting be postponed? And I got totally confused by that. So I sent it actually to, also to Wayne. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm just opening it up. What page are you on of the alert? This is the.
Page three.
March 23rd alert?
March 25th. Today's.
Okay, hold on.
It does say the 23rd though. But it's, the governor signed on the 23rd. Is that the one you're looking at, Tom?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, I see that. Yeah, but your alert, the alert that I'm looking at says March 25th in the head, right there, so.
Shall we come back to this once?
Yeah, maybe we should come back.
With Wayne?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm here.
Well, there you go.
Great.
Okay.
What's, what's the question?
Well, the question is what I sent you actually, that once, and of course, Tom Harrington is here. So the question is, who's who's on first on this?
Given the decision, my interpretation, and Tom may disagree, but my, my interpretation is that given that you have not yet posted the warrant, that you're on first. And that that was, that was the value of the decision you made last, last week. The moment that you decide to post the warrant and call the meeting, then if there is a subsequent need to change the date, then I'm on first. After, after consulting with you and local public health officials. And it's further my understanding that while the legislation that doesn't seem to have passed yet, but I'm still expecting it to, that at least the versions that I've seen, while they change a couple of things, they don't change that fundamental set of responsibilities.
So this is Tom. So this is kind of a, a much debated topic of conversation among the town councils and the state right now. And I would have agreed with Wayne last week that, that if the warrant is not yet posted, it's in the hand of the Board of Selectmen to move. Once posted, it becomes more in the hands of the moderator. However, there's, I believe the, the more popular opinion right now, and again, this is, you know, we're all kind of trying to figure this out on the fly a little bit, is that Chapter 39, Section 9 does allow the Selectmen to change the date of a hearing or delay, I should say, delay the date of a town meeting even if it's posted. And that's why the governor's order on elections addressed elections, but not town meeting. So it's getting into the weeds a little bit. But in Carlisle, given the fact that you haven't posted the warrant yet, I think it's in the Selectmen's charge.
So what you're saying is that the other, in our last meeting, it was fine what we did in postponing it. And so we're still postponed. And we'll figure it out as we get through this situation as to what, when we want to do it.
Right. And with the new, and with, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's both your town meeting and your election.
Right.
But pending any coming legislation, we still should probably plan to have it prior to June 30, unless you get extension from legislation.
But we have about 30 days to make that decision.
Yeah, it's not urgent we decide that at this time. But it's still the drop dead date pending new legislation.
We're, yeah, we're required to have our town meeting prior to June 30.
Yes. We cannot have the vote any later than June 30th. The elections.
The election.
The election, right. And town meeting, if we wanted town meeting to be a week before that, it would put it at June 22nd, and then the caucus on May 15th.
Right.
We, I think are still thinking that there might be further legislation that will push that beyond the June 30th timeframe. Or are we thinking that?
Or at least, or at least determining what happens if it's not done so that we have, so that they can authorize continuing resolutions and that sort of thing for budgetary purposes.
Yeah, because we don't have any of, so I'm just wondering.
I think, Tom, that was a question for you.
Yeah.
So could you repeat the question?
Okay, so the question is, do you think there will be more legislation that will extend that June 30th date to later? You do.
I do.
So, so then the next question, is there any value to us setting a new date, let's say, setting June 30th right now? And just kind of using that as a target and then moving it again? Or shall we just wait until we hear from the state?
I would not set June 30th as your date if, if you think it's possible that you may want to have it before June 30th. Because the, the way the statutes are written, it's all about delaying town meeting. And so if you set June 30th, I, I don't know that the statute allows you to reset an earlier date.
Okay, so better not set anything. That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Or think we should be thinking about something else?
No, I think we've got time.
Okay. So the next thing on our agenda is the LEPC COVID-19 update. And Alan, do you want to do, give that, or?
Well, I can at least start it.
Okay, and we also have a press release. We could.
Is John on the call?
I didn't see him.
I didn't see him.
He's only been working 32 hours a day, so.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, I didn't see him.
Well, as the official representative on the LEPC, the LEPC has been meeting every other day since this began with an extended group of attendees, which includes the school, school committee. Normally, the LEPC consists of about five members. We've had about 10 attending our meetings lately, which has been very good because clearly this crisis has extended well beyond what we normally deal with, which are power outages and freeze-down and that sort of thing. So this has been good to have all these people attending because it's been, the things we're dealing with now are far more complicated than our normal emergencies. But we have been doing that. The primary work of the LEPC is to plan. And we've been doing that. Clearly, our major emphasis has been on assuring the health and safety of the citizens of the town of Carlisle. Trying to figure out ways that we, for people who, for instance, cannot get out and get shopping, get food to them, get medicines to them. And this is, this is not an easy sort of thing. And those plans are very much still in, still in development. But great things have happened. The churches have volunteered to be assistance in this whole effort. And we have lots and lots of volunteers who are doing it. The availability of protective personnel equipment is also a concern. And that is being responded to as well by people who are sewing masks and getting supplies to our first responders, as well as to the local hospitals and the local medical offices. Everybody's chipping in on this really, really well. The, one thing we're still trying to deal with is what happens if we have somebody who needs to be isolated, but has no place to go? That is, do we have a place in town where we can do that? And there's various options that are, that are being looked at as to how we might do that. Either through designating some spot within town, working with MOUs with hotels in the area, anything like that. And looking at what other towns are doing. And this is, this is a problem that all towns are having to deal with. And if it comes to that, and hopefully it won't, we'll be prepared to do so. We have a small subgroup who are meeting to come up with a plan to do that sort of thing. There is emergency funding available for people who need it. And that is addressed in the press release that is coming out. The, we have, as far as I've, I don't know what the current thing is. We now have two confirmed cases of COVID-19 in town. And that's to be expected, I guess. We're not, those folks are, near as I can tell, self-isolating at the moment and are in contact with their individual physicians. I'll open it up to anybody else who, firstly, all the Selectmen have been attending the LEPC meetings. And so we're all kind of aware of what's going on. If anyone has other things to add, please do so now.
The only other thing I wanted to add was that we have two confirmed cases. But our fire chief has told us that he has, he's aware of other cases that are not confirmed cases because, in town. So we have more than two cases in town. We just have two confirmed cases in town.
That's probably the case. And again, we want to emphasize that, and everybody has seen this, the recommendations for social distancing, hand washing, taking every precaution, don't go out if you don't have to, keep your trips to the supermarket and pharmacy to a bare minimum. And hopefully, we'll all come out of this reasonably well.
I'll just say also that the Council on Aging, you know, under Angela's very able leading of it now, has, has been doing a wonderful job of connecting with older citizens in town that are regular users of the Council on Aging services. And those individuals that she, you know, luckily, she has a close relationship with those that are particularly vulnerable and is, you know, working on making sure those folks are taken care of. I also want to say that we've had quite a bit of discussion about communications. And I think, as you can see, the people watching tonight that were, you know, we've done a lot of work on the town website. And the Board of Health has information on their part of the website. And we're working on a way to gather all of the email information that we have to be able to send out information to people in a, you know, in a broader way. And that's, that's being worked on now.
And of course, the, I mean, a special thank you to the mosquito. Their communication system has been working extremely well. They're regularly communicating with people with updates. And so thank you so much to our wonderful newspaper. Because that's been a great source of information to the townspeople. And the web, and the town website also is working extremely well.
And I also, there's, I believe there's also a button in the alert area or somewhere, wait, somewhere on the website. And I will, I'll have to double-check with Jen. She told me, and I frankly, I'm sorry, I've forgotten. But we're going to have a place on the website for questions, for people to submit questions as well. If they can't, for instance, come to our little, you know, virtual forum. If you have questions that you would like to submit to the Selectmen or to anybody else on town, we'll have a place to collect all of those as well.
Yeah, I think I also, I also want to say, we've, we've had a great deal of assistance from the school. Well, as you all know, the Town Hall has been closed for public access. People were trying to work from home, but not all of them had the equipment or the IT skills to do that. And the school has come to our great assistance by providing equipment and instruction to those people who needed it. And we want to thank the school very much for that assistance.
Yeah. I was emailed a couple of questions just before we started the, our, our meeting tonight. And one question is, how are we, are we thinking we're going to post sort of a daily information about the number of cases, the number of confirmed cases or presumptive positive tests here in Carlisle? And I gather Concord is doing that on their website.
It is my understanding that the Board of Health will be posting that in their alert, you know, on their page every day. And you'll have, everybody will have access to that page.
And then the other, one of the other, a couple of the questions have already been addressed, but one that hasn't was, if someone who has tested positive, and I guess is reluctant to quarantine themselves, does the town have any power to insist on quarantining someone who has tested positive? I don't know, Tom, if that's a question you are comfortable answering at this point, or we'd have to look into it.
One more time?
Whether, does the town have any power to insist on someone quarantining themselves who has tested positive?
I can get back to you on that. I, yeah, I don't have the answer.
Okay. I also wanted to mention that the school committee is meeting every week on Friday at 8:30 for updates from the school.
In the morning.
In the morning, that's 8:30 in the morning. Yes, I should have said 8:30 in the morning. And here is another question. As cases are being confirmed, are we relying on those folks to reach out to everyone that they've been in touch with recently to give them a heads-up about a potential infection? Or how does that work?
That's being handled by the board.
That's being handled by the Board of Health.
That's being handled, handled by the Board of Health, yes. However, because of privacy issues, the Board of Health could not, cannot publicize, you know, who's, who's got it. And in fact, they, they can't even give the names to the first responders. They can give addresses, and that's it. And we are not, you know, we don't have, the selectmen have none of that information. That's not our bailiwick. We're, we're trying to make sure that you will get the, you know, whatever information you can from the Board of Health, but that's, that's the best we can do. Okay. Any other things from the selectmen that they would like to add or ask questions of the LEPC?
I see that there are 69 participants on here. Can any participant do something in the chat or?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that if they had any questions.
Right. And comments. I, I mean, if it's a really urgent question, you know, go ahead. But really, what I'd like to, to do is have just the, that forum where everybody, everybody will be unmuted. Everybody can have a turn to ask questions, and everybody then has a chance to hear the question and hopefully, an answer. But they'll have to be Board of Selectmen questions because we don't have the Board of Health answers. But we could possibly know where to point you to, to find those answers. And I would say probably, at this point, the web, our town website on the Board of Health page will be your best bet. Okay. The discussion of the municipal vulnerability program. We had an email which you, the selectmen had a copy of.
Yeah, I can copy this too, if you want, as a liaison to the master planning.
Okay, why don't you, yeah, because there's been some further, go ahead, Barney, take it away.
Okay, hi. Yeah, hi, everybody. So just, just as a reminder to all of us, so at the March 10th meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Michelle Rowden came and made her presentation about this program. She's the New England Regional Coordinator for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. Now, this has nothing to do with the COVID-19 crisis. This is about a program where we can apply for funds to mitigate the effects of climate change. And at the time that we had the conversation at the March 10th meeting, we all agreed it was a very worthwhile program and that we would have liked to submit an application to be considered, but the Energy Task Force just did not have the, you know, it's a full, completely volunteer organization, and they didn't have the time to prepare the application. And so unfortunately, we, we were not able to, to submit one for the earlier application deadline. However, there is another round of funding, and so she really encouraged us to figure out a way to apply for the, the, well, the first, there are several levels to your application, but the initial one would be just a grant to do some, to do some planning for how we might use additional funding. So the Master Plan Steering Committee talked about it, and we decided that we really wanted to try to apply, and it made a lot of sense to have that be pushed through by the Master Plan Committee as well as the Planning Board. So we're very fortunate in having a volunteer here in town. And let me just, for my own sake, pull up. Oh, gosh, maybe I can't do it on my, okay. Her, her name is Luce, Lisa, Lisa Davis, Lisa Lewis Davis? Lisa Davis Lewis.
No relation.
No, no. And for those of you that may not know her, she has lived in town quite a long time, and she was involved on the Planning Board and then just done some other leadership roles. And she also does this kind of work for a living. And she has recently worked with, I believe it's the town of Tewksbury, for them to make an application. And so she contacted the Chair of the Committee, Jan Corneal, when she heard that we were interested in trying to do this and offered to help us with the application for free. And so the Master Plan Steering Committee would very much like to do that. The Planning Board thinks it makes sense. So this is really by way of, I don't know that we are required, that we have to have the Board of Selectmen, you know, vote to authorize this, but the Steering Committee and the Planning Board thought it'd be a good idea to have the Board of Selectmen, you know, discuss it and endorse doing this. Any questions or thoughts on that?
Well, I think it's a good idea. The, I mean, this is, as I understand, this early process, it's really asking for help from other people who are in the state agencies to give us a hand with this. And I think this is great that Lisa Lewis wants to spearhead this, and I think we should encourage it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, anytime somebody in town wants to volunteer to lead something, really run with it? You don't say no. Yeah, no, and she was on ZB A for years. Yeah, no, she's, she's excellent, yes. It's great, great that somebody wants to run. Because I think we were one of like three towns, you know.
Did not have, right.
And this first stage is really engaging consultants who are already prepared to help us with this. So it's, it's a fairly straightforward process at this point.
Yeah. And when we had the presentation, we all thought it was a wonderful idea. We just didn't know how we were going to get the manpower to do it. And then suddenly, there, you know.
And now we have it.
There we have it. So, great.
That's, I mean, I, I do want to make clear that won't, she will help do the application. She is not volunteering to be the point person. So it will still require some time from, you know, one of the, one or two of the members of the Master Plan Steering Committee and potentially, a little bit of staff time.
Well, that's what she says now.
Right, exactly. Ease her into it, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we, do we feel the need to make a motion? Or should we just?
We just go by consensus.
By consensus, okay.
I think, you know, we just support.
Nathan, are you good with this?
I am good with this.
Okay, great.
Good.
We're right on schedule.
Town Administrator's Report.
I think really what I wanted to talk about was the postponement of town meeting and town elections and so forth. And we kind of talked about that already, and there's no real urgency to set a date until we're certain that we want to go with it. So I think we can put that on a future agenda.
Okay.
Tim, do you want to say a little bit about town hall and, and how the staff is working? And I know you mentioned a little bit about the laptops, but do you want to?
Sure, sure. Since I guess it was the 12th, we sent employees home, or I should say, all non-essential employees were sent home. Essential employees have been working remotely where possible, but have been coming in on a kind of a sporadic basis, I would say. Not, not every day, but a little day during the week. And the school's been very good about getting some technology into the hands of town employees so they can work remotely. Financial offices are operating on kind of a skeleton crew and staggering the number of employees who are in on any given day, depending on the function, whether it's payroll or paying bills or, you know, tax collection. So the work's being divided up by who absolutely needs to be in the building, and people are practicing social distancing while they're here. So I think we're, we're doing, you know, kind of the best we can. As you know, the situation changes nearly daily as to what is being recommended. I should say that the, the initial decision by the board was to close through Friday, March 27th, which effectively would be Monday, March 30th. I know the school department took the step of closing through April 7th, I believe. And now I hear the governor has sort of topped that by saying schools will be closed until early May. But I think, for the sake of consistency, we ought to consider at least the April 7th date for town facilities in total being unavailable to the public for that amount of time, at least.
Yeah, I think we, obviously, LEPC talked about that today. We were all in favor of that. And again, if we need to, with the governor extending things out today, we may want to look at that again, but there's no urgency to do that. We'll, we'll be using the April 7th date as current deadline, where everything will remain closed until, at least until then.
And Tim, just for those watching or listening, I'll ask the question, and everyone in town hall is continuing to be paid?
Yes. We, I think this is the second pay period that, that we've had, and all employees are being paid in full under the current circumstances. We don't know how long this would continue, and we don't know, you know, certainly depending upon tax collections and going forward and what kind of work people, you know, can do or not do. But for the time being, everyone's being paid, and we anticipate, we hope that we'll get everyone back, back here in the reasonable future. But so far, that's been the, the plan. So no, no employees listening to this should have fear of missing a paycheck from the town. We understand it's not, you know, nothing that anyone did, no one's fault. We're not going to penalize our workers and their families, you know, for that. And I did hear a snowplow go by the house the day before last, so.
That's fun.
I, I heard it today. It was yesterday, I don't remember. But again, I'm looking at the, the council report, and it says on March 18th, the president signed the law, into law the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and municipal employers are required by law to provide paid sick and family emergency leave. And if the employee takes leave under the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act, then the employer must pay after the first 10 days of leave. So it's, and then they can get, they can use accrued leave, and the employee takes leave under the emergency paid sick leave, then the employee is paid for two weeks. The rates of pay for both are capped. So, and I assume something in that, the bill that came through the Congress will, will hopefully reimburse us for some of this.
We, we hope.
Yeah.
And the other thing I've just mentioned on the pay is that the superintendent and the school committee, you know, have approved the same thing for the teachers and the school staff.
The thing that concerns me personally is the financial impact on our town of this whole thing, of the extending, extension of the deadlines to pay tax bills, the ability of people to be able to pay those bills when they do get around to paying them. And so I think that in the next few weeks, we should be making a concerted effort to get together with our financial, you know, finance department and the FinCom and be looking at our budgets to see where we can, you know, what will be possible that we might need to do. Because I don't think we want to wait till the, till the last minute to be talking about that. So stay tuned, folks. I think we have to get that started. Anybody else have any?
There's a question, a chat question there.
Oh, sorry. Which one? I've got 17 chat questions here.
Vanessa's, Vanessa's asking about when the town website's going to next be updated. It looks like the last update was 3:23.
It was, well.
From Board of Health.
Worked on today, on the Board of Health. It was worked on today. So whatever, I don't, you know, I can't answer that question. All I know is that they did work on it today at 1 o'clock. And I think what they were mostly trying to do was get links in there so that you would be pointed to. I don't know, I, you know, I wasn't at that meeting, but I do know that they were working on it today. So it's probably as updated as it's going to be for a little bit until somebody has a chance to work on it again. I'll certainly, you know, double check. I haven't looked at that page, but I do know that they worked on it today. Okay. Any liaison reports? The municipal facilities committee met today, was today, Wednesday? Yesterday they met to talk about, you know, what we're going to do with the, with the buildings now that they're empty. So we talked about, you know, cleaning and keeping them warm and, we didn't get very far. And then we also talked about the police station and how to handle that, because we're not expecting, we're expecting to get less money than we asked for to begin with, even for the the maintenance issues. And so we're trying to prioritize some of those to bring the building up to code at the very least. That's about it on that.
We've got a question about will the town be involved in bringing testing here?
That's a Board of Health question. I can't answer.
And it's unlikely they'll be doing testing in town. They'll probably go to Emerson to have it done.
Yeah. All right. Any other liaison reports?
Yeah, I just want to speak briefly about the Master Plan Steering Committee. So we are actually meeting tonight on a Zoom call. And so I am reporting in, in absentia, I suppose. But we have been in touch with Civic Moxie. They are doing the next stage of their work, to the degree that they can, working remotely. One is they're continuing to work, work on getting the maps updated that we've talked about. They are in the phase now of doing the analysis based on all of the information that they've collected over the first four or five months of the contract. The existing conditions that are now all posted on the website. And this is going to be a really interesting and critical phase because they're going to help us really look at what is feasible, what are the, what are some of the feasible options in the different areas of concern? And set us up then as a, as a town to look at those choices. You know, we've also looked at the schedule of our public meetings, and we, you know, have already discussed having to suspend or postpone those. And as we understand better what's going to happen in the state and the world, we will come back and figure out how we're going to reschedule those. And the steering committee is taking on assignments to, for some of the pieces that we need to be doing that we can do remotely. So we're moving ahead to the degree that we can to continue moving toward a, a master plan. plan.
Okay. I think the only thing left is that we need to set a date and time for our virtual question, unless we want to just convert this to the first installment. And then I think it would be better if we were posted, but, you know, we can post another one.
Can I, sorry, can I just ask, Tim, with complete straight, sorry. So I know the council had a chance to talk with Allied Paving, and apparently those conversations went well. Tim, is there, I wasn't involved in the conversation, I just know what happened. So, Tim, does it seem like we're, or I guess Tom, if you're in, well, does it seem like we're going to continue to move forward with Allied?
It does, and I know Tom is still on the call, and he can speak to, the main issue was that we need to be satisfied that they could sign a tax certification agreement that was accurate and was truthful, and we're satisfied that they in fact can do that. So there's no impediment to the contract, but I would defer to Tom if he's got a comment.
Yeah, that's right. We got on a call with Allied, with Allied's accountant on Monday, and put them through their paces on their ability to sign a tax certification and the accuracy of the tax certification. And I came away satisfied that their certification is legitimate, that they had the right to sign it and make the claims they made, and that we can proceed with them on the contract.
Good news.
Excellent news.
Yeah.
And so, Luke, are we thinking then that we're going to go ahead with the work schedule as it was outlined earlier?
Yeah, I mean, right now, I don't see us changing that, you know, because the idea is that it's supposed to start end of June. It was basically right after school ended. Yeah, so that's still the plan. I mean, obviously, we'd have to have a town meeting before the work started, right? But, yeah, that's the goal. And then, you know, because it's right through the summer, so.
Right.
Yeah. But no, it's good news because that's $100,000 less than any other bid, so that's a big plus. Great, thanks, Tom. And Tim.
Okay, so time and place for, or not place, obviously, same place, same station, but time for a virtual town hall.
So we'd be setting a tentative date just to be confirmed that the Board of Health can be there at the same time?
Yeah.
I want Board of Health, you might want.
Well, yeah. It looks like, well, originally, the idea was it was going to be the Board of Selectmen, but from the nature of the questions that we're getting tonight, I think we're not the right board to be answering a lot of these questions, so, yeah.
That's precisely it. Yeah, I mean, if we're going to have a public forum for people to be able to ask, but the Board of Health is driving a lot of the things, it seems like we can sponsor it and make sure, you know, that it happens and everything, but I'm not sure that it makes sense to do it without it if we're just saying, I don't know.
I'm not sure the whole Board of Health needs to be there, at least a health agent.
Yeah, I'm thinking LEPC almost.
You know, you don't have to have them all there at the first one, right? You could also, if we think this is valuable, you know, at the first one, you have Linda Fantasia as the Board of Health agent, and maybe Chief Fisher, and maybe if there's a next one, you know, you change it around a little bit.
My preference would be that we just invite everybody.
And see who comes. I mean.
You mean invite all of the LEPC people?
Yeah, and Board of Health.
And Board of, yeah, just extend, it's an open conversation, and the more, the merrier.
Or getting a few questions.
Are we thinking next week or this week?
I don't know.
Are we thinking this is in the evening? I assume we are, right?
That was a question, too. I know the school does theirs at 8:00 in the morning.
I think it's better in the evening.
Better in the evening, okay.
Because we just want participation, right?
Right.
And people who are working, you know, see what they may be.
Yeah. Well, it looks like, well, I see one input here, that they'd rather have it this week than rather than having to wait for it next week, but we're already at Wednesday, so I don't, I, you know, and those people are sort of flat out because it is.
And it has to be 48 hours, so, right?
Yeah.
What if we set it for next Tuesday, which is our regular meeting night, pending the availability of Board of Health folks?
That works for me, next Tuesday, the 31st.
Yep. Yeah, that's fine with, I'm pretty sure that's fine with me. I'm not going anywhere.
Because LEPC's meeting Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so that would still, that would be, that would be okay.
And our T board.
Somebody's raised their hand.
I might have another virtual meeting, unfortunately, but I'll check. I'll certainly try to.
I don't know who, I don't know who their user iPhone is, but somebody's raised their hand.
Oh.
Well, but Tom, do we need to, do we need to adhere to the 48-hour posting now? I thought with the state of emergency, we didn't need to.
No, the 48-hour posting is still in place.
It's still in place, okay.
Yeah.
Couldn't budge on something, gee.
So if we post it tomorrow, Thursday.
Did you see the chat comment?
No, I can't have my calendar and the chat up at the same time, that to ask.
It said, Kathy McDonald says, I think the energy is around the Board of Health communicating. Doesn't necessarily need to be a meeting, just hearing how they're tracking and sharing cases would be helpful.
Oh, well, that's, that I can answer. They're tracking the cases on Maven, which is a state website that reports to them. And they are.
I guess it's also asking the Board of Health to please do an update on the website rather than waiting until next Tuesday, right? I guess the, maybe the Board of Health particular website information doesn't have the latest.
They can only put it up when Maven gives it to them because it's not official until then.
Yeah.
Right, but they, but they could be, every day, they could just go in and post the same information that they have.
Right, they're updating.
People are looking for a daily update. I'm just saying, you know, they're doing that on the Concord website.
Yeah, I think just a couple of things. Number one is, you know, I think this is a request of Tim and all the chairs of all the committees, you know, particularly with people working from home, maybe there's a little bit more time. I think that we should be asking the town staff to keep the website updated as much as possible, like, let's make that a real priority so that people really have the most recent update, you know, like, the school being closing and closed until May 4th by Governor Baker isn't on the website yet. You know, it did just come out, but it'd be great if we could really, really push hard to get information there. And I also just want to say, you know, ask is, does it make sense for us to have, like, more regular meetings, like, you know, should we be posting something that's like every Tuesday and every Thursday or something like that as the Board of Health, just to make sure, I mean, as the Board of Selectmen, just to make sure that, you know, if anybody has any, you know, wants any input or anything like that, they have it, or maybe we do it in the evening of the days when there's a LPSI meeting, just to, just so that we keep the communication going?
Well, LEPC is doing that.
How are they communicating, Alan?
They're communicating through the, through the press releases that Chief Fisher is issuing.
So that would, and that's the way people would access that.
And that's just put on the website and go to the mosquito.
Yeah. So if people have not signed up for the alerts from the mosquito, they should do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do think, I would agree with Nathan, though, Alan, I think it's important in addition to that for people to have the opportunity to directly hear from us or for, from the Board of Health agent, you know, if you, because this is a very serious situation, and we want people to have the information they're looking for and to be reassured that, you know, about what we're doing to keep everybody safe. So I, I mean, I think it's, I would, I would be in favor of having us meet regularly for a while and have that just standing by.
Yeah, I propose every Tuesday, I propose every Tuesday and Thursday, 7:00.
It's fine with me. I think it's, I do think it's important. I just want to say one thing about the COVID, the, you know, the number of cases type of information, it lags what's really on the ground. I mean, Maven, I would say, is probably a full two weeks behind the time, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, though, that people are looking to know, you know, how many cases are there. They just want to have information about what's going on and everything. You know, as we, as we get the cases, you know, we can give the cases, but, you know, just keeping everybody informed and really updating the website.
Yeah.
Do you want to get back to the iPhone user was, Dave, can you, it was Dave Modell, he had something that he wanted to say. Dave, could you raise your hand again so you come back up to the top so that Tim can unmute you?
And then also Nancy Pierre set her hand up or had a comment on the chat.
Yeah, she does, about, again, it's a Board of Health question.
Kate, if it's okay with you, Tim, I mean, Kate, can you unmute Dave?
Oh, Tim has to unmute him. I see.
Find him.
He should be up towards the top because his hand is raised. It's the blue hand.
There he is. Hi, Dave.
Hey, Tim, you're not supposed to be in the office.
I know.
That's why, that's why I'm on camera all this time.
There we go, he's unmuted.
Hello, everybody. So two points. One is, as I already mentioned, we're having a weekly school committee meeting, so that's helpful. So I would encourage the Board of Selectmen to also meet weekly because we're all starved for attention, and lots of people, you know, as you're seeing tonight, lots of people participate in these meetings, and I think they like it, so I would encourage that. And it's been very effective for us, and the comments are good, you know, people can ask comments. But the main reason why I raised my hand is just a question, maybe Tom Harrington can answer. I think, I'm not clear on when you have a town forum and you have a, you know, critical mass of school committee or Board of Health, is that an open meeting? I wonder if it'd be better in these, the town hall meeting that Kate is proposing that you might have actually a joint meeting between the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen, in which, I mean, the result is the same in a way. I mean, everybody, it's your choice, people can participate, but I just want to make sure that you can have the group of the body, the elected body, you know, weigh in on issues without it running afoul of open meeting law, so that's the comment.
So I would say to that, anytime, so a quorum of you can go to, you know, a quorum of the school committee and can go to the school, to a Board of Selectmen's meeting and not violate the open meeting law. However, if there are a quorum of you, of your board present, and you plan to deliberate, or as you said, weigh in on a topic that's within the jurisdiction of your board, you should have posted before you do that. So to me, it's a better safe than sorry. If there's going to be a quorum of you present, just post.
Right, I agree. So what we did, you know, the last meeting, Kate was at that meeting, we had, physical meeting we had with the school committee, we invited the Board of Health and there was a joint meeting, and obviously, as has been pointed out, lots of the questions are better resolved by the Board of Health. So my advice is that it should be a regular meeting called by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, to which you invite everybody and let them comment as you want. And of course, the Selectmen can recognize whoever they want.
Yeah, so, Tim, maybe you could ask the Board of Health if they can meet with us every Tuesday and Thursday and have that be posted.
Sure. Thank you.
And were there any other questions from any of the participants that aren't Board of Health?
Yeah, because the last question was a Board of Health question, but.
I think that, I think it'd be important that if anybody does have anything, that you raise your hand because the chat seems to have quite a delay.
Okay.
Ah, okay.
Do you want to just spell out, just in case somebody's a Zoom user for the first time or something, Nathan, you want to just explain how one would do that?
If, on the bottom, if you click the Participants tab, on the right-hand side, when it comes up, you'll see a little button that says Raise Hand.
I clicked it.
I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Once you have the participants list on the right-hand side?
Yep.
Right above the chat and below the participants, it says Raise Hand.
Yeah.
Not on my screen.
Well, if you, did you click on participants? And you get a list of all the people?
I have them.
Okay, look at the very bottom.
Oh, yeah, now I got them.
There's a box, that one box says Mute Me, and the other box says Raise Hand.
So I'm going to raise my hand.
At the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, and that comes up instantaneously, that's how you're right away.
Yeah. Yeah, got it.
So anyway, nobody's raised their hand.
Well, you know, there's three, on my, my screen, there's three pages of people, so if they raise their hand, do they come to the front?
Yeah, they go to the top.
The first page? Okay, because if they raise their hand on the third page, I'm not going to.
Maybe, maybe we could ask Steve to raise his hand because he's at the bottom. Or Vanessa, raise your hand, and then we'll, you should come up to the top. We're doing testing with our citizens.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't see it. How about Jen? I saw her.
I just raised my hand.
Yeah, Vanessa just popped up to the top after raising her hand.
Right.
Really?
Yeah.
Not on my screen. Oh, here, there it is, Vanessa's iPad. Okay, sorry.
I think Nathan has superior, superior internet power.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Vanessa.
Hey, I thought I was doing pretty well sharing my screen earlier.
But actually, your hand is still raised. Is it raised on purpose?
No, she was giving a thumbs up. And now she's clapping. Okay, that's one chat.
All right, so are we all set?
I move, I move, will you turn?
Second. All right, we have to do this by roll call. Barney? Okay, raise your hand.
Arnold, eye, yeah, I can just hear.
Alan?
Brown eye.
Lewis, eye.
Okay, brown eye. And Askalulo? Eye, yeah, he's muted for some reason, but he's waving and shaking his head.
It's my popular demand.
All righty, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Good night, all.
Good night, all.
Be safe.
Wash your hands.
Yeah.